Convene the regular meeting of City Council, November 9th, and ask for a roll call.
Jacobson?
Here.
Finukin?
Here.
Marquardt?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Norrico?
Here.
Baker?
Here.
Ray?
Here.
Seven, President?
Thank you. I'd like to ask Officer Sullivan to come forward, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
(inaudible)
(inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible)
Thank you. Okay, we have before us the agenda for this evening. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Noriko, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Snow, roll call.
Yes.
Finukin?
Yes.
Marquardt?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Norrico?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven, I?
Motion carried, thank you. Our first presentation this evening is an introduction. I'll turn to City Manager Amory Gorah.
And I'm going to ask our Assistant City Manager Patty Hoppensett to do the introductions.
Okay.
I'd like to introduce Jared Heine. Jared is our new Management Analyst in the City Manager's Office, where he will serve as the City's FOIA Officer amongst other projects and responsibilities. Management Analyst Lauren Stott will serve as a backup FOIA Officer assisting in with FOIA processing. After a recent resignation of an employee in the Manager's Office, the duties and responsibilities of staff were reevaluated and reassigned to better meet the needs of the community, resulting in the vacancy not being filled and Jared's position being reclassified to Management Analyst. Jared's most recent position with the City was as a Public Works Intern. Jared joined the City as an intern in the Manager's Office where, while completing a two-year Masters in Public Administration Program with Northern Illinois University. In addition, Jared has achieved a Bachelor's Degree in Political Science and History from St. Norberg College in DePere, Wisconsin. So I'm very excited to introduce Jared as the new Management Analyst, and please join me in welcoming Jared.[807.31][807.31](applause)
Next on our agenda this evening, we have the proudly decal feature of reflecting on our Camp Power experience this past summer. I'll call on Chief Lowry to introduce this topic.
Good evening, Council and Community Staff. Thank you for allowing us a few moments to give you an update on Camp Power. I'm going to introduce the ladies in just a second, but I kind of wanted to revisit what Camp Power is all about. Late in 2013, we were taking a look at crime throughout the city and trying to assess what proactive, non-conventional things we could do, strategies we could implement to address crime and try and make some improvements in our community. Although I have to admit, it was totally out of my wheelhouse, I felt it was important, as did the ladies I'm about to introduce you to, that we go into a community, a neighborhood known as University Village. The calls for service for both police and fire were very high in the community, and it seemed like there was something maybe we could do there to address it, other than try to arrest our way out of a situation. With that, Camp Power was kind of conceived, and the three ladies that are about to come on up here and join me, really got together with the police and collaborated and put together a program that, for ten weeks during the summer, provided an academic component, a food component, which consisted of a lunch and an afternoon snack, all types of recreation and what I call leadership mentoring and education for kids, and kept over a hundred children each year occupied, and this year was a fairly dramatic increase. Over the first year, we serviced the kids of University Village. And again, this program was really targeted at kids. The first year, in 2014, when we began the program, it was addressing children from the elementary, in the elementary school age range, those in the public school. The second year, the program expanded to look at middle school kids, a little bit older kids, and that program was called Power Up. The ladies are going to have some more to tell you about that, but what I wanted to say was, this was truly a community collaboration, to do the right thing in a community, to try and bring programming to kids who just, not by any fault of their own, did not have the opportunities that other children in our community have, and I think it's brought about some tangible results. And I think they'll address some things about where the future is going as well. But the three ladies I'm going to introduce you to tonight, and you've seen them before, Lisa Cummings, Nancy Prang, and Mary Hess. And Lisa.
Good evening, my name is Lisa Cummings. I'm the Community Health Liaison for Kish Health System, and I'm very grateful that our health system invests in me to be able to improve the health and wellness of our county, specifically with our youth in DeKalb County. I'm going to share with you a little bit about some of the outcomes that we have had in our second year. The first year definitely was a fun and exciting year, with a lot less time to plan, and so this last year, we really have had time to look at how we could do things better and really improve in last year's Summer Camp. For employment, seventeen staff members were hired for the 2005 Camp Program, Camp Power Program. Seven University Village parents were hired, six NIU students, and two Kishwaki College students. We also had one NIU graduate that served as our Assistant Director during the summer, and we also did some outreach and had a Northwestern University student as well. At the kickoff barbecue in June was when we started registration for the families. There were a total of three hundred and seven school-aged children that were living in University Village during that 2014-15 school year. In the first four weeks of camp, a hundred and forty youth, which is forty-six percent of the youth in University Village, ages five to twelve, enrolled in Camp Power. By returning the completed registration, a total of eighteen of those enrollees never attended, but forty percent of those kids did attend camp on a moderate, consistent basis throughout the eight weeks of camp. That's almost half of those kids throughout the summer. As Chief Lowry stated, we also had a new Power Up program, which was for our teen students as well, and we had a total of twenty-two youth that registered for that program with an average attendance of eighteen kids that came almost every day during the summertime. And for those of you that have middle school students, you know that that's pretty remarkable. Nancy's going to talk to you a little bit about the nutrition component of Camp Power. We really focused on that first year, on physical activity, getting those kids really moving. We know that many kids over the summer, that they may not engage in as much activity or nutrition education, and so for the physical activity component, we actually had a NIU grad assistant that came in and did data assessment for us throughout the entire summer, not only on the physical activity component, but also the nutrition component as well. And so we know that our kids in Camp Power, where more than eighty-one percent of the time, they were moderately vigorously active throughout the summertime, and so that is definitely what we wanted to see our kids. We wanted to see them moving all summer long. And with that, I'll let Nancy share with you a little bit about nutrition.
Good evening, I'm Nancy Prang. I'm with Northern Illinois University in the College of Health and Human Sciences in the Nutrition Department, which is why I get to talk about the nutrition. So one of the goals of Camp Power is to feed the children over the summer months. The vast majority, if not one hundred percent, are all on the free or reduced school lunch program, but once summer rolls around, there hadn't been, prior to Camp Power, access to the summer lunch program, so that is one of our big goals. And for the 2015 Camp Power, we served two thousand five hundred and fifty-one lunches during the summer, which is up a little bit from last year as well, which is fantastic. We also provide nutrition education twice during the week. The campers get it once, but we're there twice, since there's quite a few campers, as Lisa mentioned. And this year, we were able to hire one of my dietetic interns to run the nutrition education, which was fantastic, she did a great job. We focused on the different colors of the fruits and the vegetables, which really worked great with the younger kids, but then with the older kids, we put in a little bit of a fun activity with it and did a lot of minute-to-win-it games. If you're familiar to minute-to-win-it games, it's all kind of tricky different things that you do, and, you know, you compete with each other, and so we would do all of the different fruits and veggie ones that they had, or even morph some of the ones that they had to using different fruits and vegetables, and the kids really got, you know, it was a lot of fun for them, and utilizing the different colors of the fruits and vegetables within that just made it even more fun. During the year, we also, during the summer, we had a graduate assistant from the Department of Kinesiology come and do some data collection for us. We did a much better job collecting data this year, and so for the nutrition component of it, we did surveys midpoint and final. And I'll just give you the results of the final, because they all went up from midpoint to final, so these are our best results, so that's what I will give you. So when the kid, and this is asking the kids, okay, if they are eating more fruits, seventy-two percent of them at the end of the summer felt like they were eating more fruit. Sixty-three percent said that they were eating more vegetables. Seventy-two said that they are trying new foods, and we really tried to emphasize that throughout the summer and have them try different things. And then fifty-six percent actually said that they are asking someone at home to buy them fruits and vegetables. And that's sort of a theme that we would hear anecdotally from the parents as well, is that the kids would come home and ask for fruits and vegetables, which, as a registered dietitian, I can't ask for more. And then the last piece that I want to talk about is the crime reduction. So when we, the Camp Power came out of the Youth in Need Task Force, so crime is always on the forefront of our minds in reducing that. So as a reminder, from year one, we saw a twenty-six percent decrease in Part II crimes. This is sort of the petty theft types of crimes, correct? Good way to say it. Year two, we also looked at just the total number of offenses that were reported. So in 2014, there were ninety-nine offenses reported, and in 2015, only fifty-nine. So that was a forty-point-four percent reduction in total offenses reported. So calls for service, so this is when the police are called to break up a fight, or just, you know, check things out, so it's not necessarily a crime in progress, but just the police being called to University Village and using up those resources. In 2014, there was a hundred and eighty calls for service. In 2015, there was a hundred and fifty-six, so we saw a thirteen-point-three percent reduction in that. And then the arrests in University Village, overall, there was a forty-eight-point-six percent reduction in twenty, from 2014. So almost half of the arrests in 2015 compared to 2014. That is my piece. Now I'd like to introduce Mary Hess, who will continue.
Good evening. Thank you for having us back. My name's Mary Hess, and I'm a Prevention Specialist with, this is new to me, Kish Health System Behavioral Health Services at Ben Gordon Center, formerly known as the Ben Gordon Center. This is my second year involved with Camp Power, and in addition to focusing on the nutrition education and the physical activity, we also put a big emphasis on making sure we're creating a caring and supportive climate for the kids that we serve and also the families. And so we went ahead and used NIU this year, that same graduate student who measured that for us. And I just want to point out some of the highlights of what the kids said. We looked at, first measured the children who were ages five to eight, and the top two things that came from them is they said they were having fun and they were making friends, so we were very pleased with that. And the nine and older, the top things that came out of them is that they felt they were supported by instructors in the program, that they felt safe in the program. They thought the instructors were positive role models and had high expectations for them, and they enjoyed the activities of the program, and they also acknowledged that they did a lot of activities they wouldn't do on their own. So we're very pleased that we're fostering an environment that would allow them to do all of those things. Collaboration, it was another great, successful year for collaborating with other community organizations, just like last, you know, the first year, we had nearly, or over twenty. So I just want to be able to acknowledge all of those organizations that contributed, and that includes the Ben Gordon Center, Kish Health System, NIU College of Health and Human Sciences, DeKalb Police Department, Kishwaki Family YMCA, Voluntary Action Center, both the nutrition and the transportation programs, NIU Athletics, NIU Dining Services, DeKalb Park District, DeKalb Kiwanis, DeKalb County Health Department, Kishwaki College, Hillcrest Covenant Church, Eco Labs, DeKalb Fire Department, Bilcho Martial Arts, NIU Outdoor Recreation, Girl Scouts of Northern Illinois, University Village, City of DeKalb Administration, Three M, Liz Bachman with Everyday Audit Kit, Barb Foodmart, Tails, DeKalb County Community Gardens, Jay Smith, Prairie View Dental, and, you know, of course, a great partnership from, I just want to capture University Village again for letting us come and do that. And this year, we had approximately four hundred community volunteers show up at University Village to contribute their time to Camp Power, so that's roughly what we're in line with last year. And then finally, what I want to report on is the sustainability plan for this. Obviously, when we have this good of outcomes, it's very important that we continue to offer this program. And so, you know, with the three of us coming from different organizations and running this over the last two years, we acknowledge that it's not going to be able to sustain in that way. And so we are very pleased to report that the Kishwaki Family YMCA has agreed to take over the day-to-day operations of this, and Mark Spiegelhoff from, the CEO of the YMCA here, is here tonight, in case you have any questions for him. So they're going to, they're going to continue to run the day-to-day operations, almost like an off-site camp, and then we will, the three original members, and Chief Lowry, and then Mark from the YMCA, we're going to have an advisory committee, and so we are going to try to help meld those relationships that we've built, still have a say in kind of the structure of Camp Power, and then also be completely responsible for raising the funds so that it continue. So it's, it'll still be a free program for the children who are living there, and we will write grants and do everything we've done to try to raise that money every year. So with that, we would welcome any questions you might have.
Alderman Noriko.
I only had a very brief exposure one day, but I could tell the children were having fun. The parents there, mothers there, seemed engaged. The children were respectful and listening. In fact, I was amazed that the group was able to corral the kids, and I had to laugh. The share bowl, I thought, what a great idea. For those of you who haven't, you know, been part of Summer Camp for a while, if a child didn't like something in their lunch, they had to put it into the bowl. They couldn't just throw it away or give it to another child, and some children did actually go for more broccoli. Now, some, which meant some also put broccoli in, so you may still have to work on that, but I can only imagine the benefit to the children, you know, through, who participated throughout the summer, and, you know, I would, you know, I think it's wonderful that the program will continue and you have a stable base. and you have a stable base, you know, through the Y. But you've laid a wonderful foundation. So, thank you.
Thank you. And we're very comfortable handing it over to the Y. I mean, this was modeled after YMCA summer camp. And, you know, their core values are exactly what we've tried to do over the last two years. And so, we're just very thankful that, you know, they're willing to do this for us.
I'd have to say, personally, having participated in Camp Power for both years, I certainly saw a change from 2014 to 2015. Lisa, you characterized accurately, 2014, the operation of Camp Power was evolving. You know, personally, I saw progress week by week in terms of organization and approach and the kids' involvement. The coaches becoming mentors at the lunch program was a significant step, which continued in 2015. I'm delighted, Mark Spiegelhoff, to learn of the Y's interest in your board's support of operating Camp Power on a day-to-day basis. I think you can see you've got tremendous energy in these three, four individuals that have been very involved in Camp Power. So, I'm pleased to see the sustainability being addressed in the Y embracing the program. Chief Lowry.
In closing, Mary, I just wanted to say a couple more things. Mary so eloquently acknowledged the community collaboration, but it also extended to many individuals, many families, the Prossels, the Brigams, the Neers. So many, and I hate to say those, just those and not remember all the rest. But thanks to the community, because this has really been a community-funded effort. I also wanted to comment in general, maybe a little bit more from a selfish perspective in regard to the police, because, you know, this is a tough time for police. We have situations throughout our country where there are confrontations with the police, some that are justified and some that are not. Sometimes the police act appropriately, and sometimes they do not. But in all of the tough times, I think that one thing that shines through is in the communities where there's relationship building and communication on all levels, across all demographics, people are people, that good outcomes will result from that. And the one that rings out for me is the 48.6% decrease in arrests this past summer during a 10-week period out of that neighborhood. What that says to me is, most of the calls were service-oriented. And we made the community, we, not just the police, the community collaborators, these ladies, everyone who participated in the program, made our community safer, made the quality of life better for these kids. And I think the numbers have been indicative of that. The numbers have actually been really surprising to me. I didn't realize the kind of impact that this program might factor into in that relationship. Clearly, getting to know people as people and being in that neighborhood has made a difference for both the residents and the police. At the end of the day, we look for the future, and thank God for Mark and the YMCA. I can't give him enough credit, along with the ladies who put this program together. This program was born in the police department, but it's really these people who came to, all came to the table, and future collaborators that came to the table to bring this community together to do the right thing. In the future, we're looking not only just to focus on University Village. There are a lot of neighborhoods in this city that could use some attention, attention like this. And so, we hope to develop a program in other locations and even conceive the idea of a portable program where we could bring the program for special events into all areas of the community. So, we've got some ideas. We'll see how they work out. And in closing, I just want to say thank you for the council's support. Thank you for the staff's support, and thank you for the community's support.
Chief Lowry and others, thank you for the comprehensive report this evening. Appreciate that. Okay, moving on, public participation. Bessie Krenopoulos wishes to speak.
I'm not sure which items, this is in regards to the consent agenda, if some items are going to be polled or not. But in general, let me just say this. Much of what you have under the consent agenda, I feel, in my humble opinion, that they should be polled, especially the items, which is most of them, that have to do with expenditure of monies. That is really not the spot that they should be placed in. A consent agenda is generally for routine types of items, not where items that should warrant at least some kind of discussion for the benefit of council and also for the benefit of public to understand better what their monies are being spent on. That's so, and when the time comes for, if some of them get polled, I may want to speak on one or two of those.
Thank you, Bessie. Do we have anyone else registered to speak this evening?
No, sir.
Okay. Moving on to consent agenda. We have before us the consent agenda. Alderman has asked for F3 and F8 to be pulled from the consent agenda for separate action. Are there any other removals from consent agenda that Alderman wished?
And it totally makes sense, but number six, just so that we can explain.
Okay.
In words for people, again.
So, F6, F3, F6, and F8. With that, I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda with those items removed.
So moved.
It's been moved. Alderman Noreco, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Fanouken. Roll call.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Marquart?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven Eye?
Thank you. Motion carried. At this point, I'll ask for an omnibus motion to vote on the approval of the items on consent agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Snow. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Marquart. Roll call.
Marquart?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven Eye?
Motion carried. Moving to item originally was F3, Resolution 2015-114, authorizing expenditure of $25,000 to the DeKalb County Community Foundation for the Illinois High School Association State Football Championship. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Snow. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Fanouken. Discussion. Alderman Noreco, did you have questions in this second?
I would just like clarification of the allotment, the dollar level, and the purpose behind it.
So, the purpose behind it is, we've allocated, the city's allocated $12,500 each year since Destination DeKalb won its bid in 2012, starting in 2013. It was the first year that IHSA Destination DeKalb hosted the football state championship tournament here. We were a sponsor at that time, at that level, $25,000, and have, like I said, continued to budget that dollar amount for the sponsorship. The sponsorship monies cover the cost of the event itself, which includes marketing and hosting the Spirit Zone Hospitality Tent for all teams and tournament visitors. There's other benefits that come along with our $25,000 sponsorship. Most notably is a 30-second spot on the IHSA telecast. So, we have the opportunity to showcase our community in a 30-second spot during the telecast of the games. Other benefits include, I turn my glasses on. We're a tent city presenting sponsor. We receive a rolling banner on the IHSA DD, IHSA Destination DeKalb website. We have ad space in a window cling. We get a banner in Tent City. We're an ambassador team host. We get mentioned in the IHSA DD advertising, and our logo is on all IHSA DD correspondence. We're mentioned in the IHSA program. There's a link to IHSA Destination DeKalb to our website. And we obviously get public acknowledgement of support. If you would like more details and what other, you know, what else goes with our sponsorship, Debbie Armstrong is here, along with Wendy West Crouch and Brad Hoy from IHSA Destination DeKalb.
The only other question I have is, and I apologize if it was presented in the material, but is there an estimate of how many visitors this event brings to DeKalb and the dollar impact for the city?
In 2013, the Convention and Visitors Bureau reported that we, they estimated about 30,000 visitors came to the community, and the event had about a million-dollar economic impact on the area.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Debbie, did you have anything to add?
Just ready for any questions that you have.
Thank you. Other questions? Alderman Snow?
My understanding, when DeKalb or NIU received this bid for the high school championships, we had to put in a bid essentially and compete with other communities. And so, there was a commitment by the Destination DeKalb Committee to raise a certain amount of funds.
Correct.
And that's why we have them here. And I have to believe that the economic impact and return on investment probably greatly exceeds $25,000 for DeKalb. So, I mean, we cannot do it, and so can other organizations, but then we are going to lose this event in DeKalb, is my understanding.
It's just a wonderful, I agree. It's a wonderful opportunity to showcase our community from visitors all over the state of Illinois. And I mean, you don't get a lot of opportunities like this every day, so it's well worth it.
Thank you.
I think, having participated as a team host in last year's IHSA competition, I would like to underscore that it also showcases NIU athletic facilities for potential students coming to NIU. It's delightful to see their eyes open when they see the Chesapeake Practice Center, where they have warm-up time available to their teams, just to see the resources that are there. So, it's a significant recruiting tool for the university as well. Other questions or discussion?
I think I'd like to add one more question.
Sure. Come to the microphone, please. Wendy West Crouch is with the Debbie Armstrong.
So, I'm Debbie Armstrong, and I'm the executive director of your Visitor Bureau, you know, and also a member of IHSA Destination DeKalb. This is Wendy West Crouch. She's our chair. I wanted to point out that we got approximately $200,000 worth of positive publicity that we didn't pay for, okay? It's because we hosted this event and because it's one of the premier IHSA events that they have in the state. So, you can't, that's priceless. You can't buy publicity like that. And what we did and what we accomplished as a community and everyone together, working together, was phenomenal. The response we got was phenomenal. Also, I want to point out that we booked 475 room nights from this event. This is on a weekend when normally our hotels are mostly dark. So, that's business coming into the hotels where that sales tax money, as you're all aware, goes back into our funds to support our quality of life here. And the other thing I want to mention, I think we would be remiss in not mentioning, is the fact that we all need to say we believe and congratulate DeKalb High School for being in the next step. So, hopefully, we'll have a hometown team in it this time. It'd be pretty nice. Do you have anything, Dan?
Thank you, Debbie.
I'd just like to say, you know, as far as, we have a whole list of things that this brought to the community. But really, what it comes down to also, besides the measurables, is the immeasurables. The experience that these people had was tremendous. I saw people leaving the stadium smiling. Whether or not their team won, they had a good time. And the feedback that I received as an ambassador last time was tremendous. Besides the fact that these people come in and see our beautiful downtown, learn more about our city, and really have a good vision and image of DeKalb when they leave. So, I, that's immeasurable.
Thank you. Other questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Can I vote twice yes? Because we do it this, we fund it every other year, but it's, I mean, we.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Marquart?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven Eye?
Thank you. Motion carried. Moving to Ordinance 2015-45, amending Chapter 3, City Administration, Section 3.45, Management Benefits Plan. And this is before us in second reading. Extensive discussion of this item was held at first reading in our previous meeting. And backup information is again contained this evening. I'll turn to Finance Director Haley for this item. Kathy?
I will just say, this is an amendment to Chapter 3. It's currently all non-bargaining unit full-time employees receive their full vacation accrual every year on January 1st. So, this is changing it so that they're receiving it as they earn it instead of basically before they're actually earning it. So, they'll receive so many hours every payroll up to through the end of December. If they get two weeks, it'll be a total of two weeks. If they get three, it'll be a total of three weeks. But I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. And I apologize, I meant to entertain a motion to approve Ordinance 2015-45. Is there a move by Alderman Fanouken? Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Marquart. Further discussion? Are there questions of Kathy at this point?
This also, sorry.
My, Alderman Marquart.
This also limits carryover of vacation as well, correct? Or accrual on down through the years.
Correct. I think there'll be some other changes with the new personnel manual that will be written at some point through the HR department. But this will assist so that when someone leaves and they get paid out, they're only getting paid out what they earned. And yes, so at December 31st, what they're carrying over. I think this year, it's still the same as what's in the, in Chapter 3, but that will be looked at.
And it would also change it so that it's paid out at the time that they earned it and not at their leave time, correct? Or is that in a different spot?
No, it would be paid out at whatever rate of pay, if I'm hearing your question right, that they leave. I think that might have been with the comp time that we paid out with the paying compensation study.
Right. So, that parts then.
That's, and that's been done.
Okay. Other questions or discussion?
So, this actually saves the city some money because they earn it slower. The accrual will be slower. And when people leave, they won't be paid out for vacation time that maybe they didn't earn. So, that's really a savings for the city and a more efficient operation.
Yep, exactly.
Okay. With that, I'll ask for a roll call.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Jacobson? Fanouken?
Yes.
Marquart?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven Eye?
Motion carried. Moving to original item F8, award of a bid to Northern Illinois Service for the demolition and cleanup of the structures located at 1015 and 1017 Market Street in an amount not to exceed $75,000. I'll ask for a motion to approve the award of bid.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Noreco. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Fanouken. I'll turn to City Engineer Laskowski.
Evening, Mayor and City Council. You'll notice on the bid tabulation that in this particular letting that there was a discrepancy, or there was a disparity in the bids that were submitted. So, Sykes &amp; Sons was a local contractor, originally bid the job at $18,873. Next in line was Northern Illinois Service from Rockford at $52,750, and then followed by Alpine Demolition Services out of St. Charles at $63,000. The reason why there is this difference in the bids is because within the bid contract, there are additional items that weren't recognized by Sykes &amp; Sons at this time, and the numbers were not included in their bid. I called in Sykes &amp; Sons to explain to them that they were not going to be, that I was recommending the next highest bidder as a more responsive bidder, and explained to them the items in the bid that we had expected to see in theirs that weren't included. So, the overall intent of this contract going out was to start making the job sites a little bit more safe and holding the contractors a little bit more accountable for the work that they'd be doing on the site. So, the- So in this case, there were items like six-foot-tall chain-link fencing that we'd be requiring around this job site to secure it and prevent anybody during non-working hours from entering the site and potentially hurting themselves. There were other items like the street patch, the street repair, and the disconnect of the facilities or the utilities that weren't included in the low bidder's bid. But again, we brought them in and spoke to them, made them aware of what we were expecting, and they're confident that in the future they'll be able to provide the items that we need going forward to provide another bid and remain competitive in the process. Overall, in this situation, the lowest responsive bidder was Northern Illinois Service. And so at this time, staff would be recommending that we award the bid to that company in the amount of fifty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
And John, the not-to-exceed amount of seventy-five thousand dollars provides up to twenty-two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to account for removal of hazardous materials?
So that could be environmental factors that we don't know of at this time, including either underground, leaky underground storage tanks or asbestos or any kind of other hazardous material that may be identified.
Okay, very good. Questions, Alderman Noriko?
Can you tell me how long these properties had been in the process of being condemned?
I don't know the answer to that question.
It's, if I can address that, it's been, these cases have been in the pipeline for a little over two years now.
Okay.
The court had given the property owners an extensive period of time to attempt to remediate the conditions at the property before going to trial, and then ultimately went to trial and gave the property owner additional time to try and remediate after trial. And then entered a judgment order indicating that the properties were unsafe and should be demolished, and gave the property owner yet another opportunity to remediate. And the property owner has chosen not to remediate. So it's at that point in time that we went out to bid on this project and bring it to council for approval. The property in question that's being demolished, from what we understand, has been vacant for decades.
So this really is an example of the kind of process that we look for the city to engage in to deal with hazardous properties, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Other questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask Alderman Baker.
I guess I'm uncomfortable sending this to an out-of-town company. If the local company had they understood what they didn't include in the bid, I mean, we could just turn this down, couldn't we? And then you put it, is time of the essence on this?
Yes, it's a property that we know to be unsafe and that has continued to deteriorate. There are structural elements in the building that have significant water damage and that, I mean, essentially there is one beam that holds up a majority of the structure that we could show you pictures of that is very concerning. And that is ultimately, the court had entertained extending a longer period of time for remediation and shortened it because of the condition of the structure and because of its close proximity to neighboring structures on both sides.
I'm sorry, I don't even know how close they are to the neighboring properties. Are you saying that the building could fall down and take out the neighbor's house or property?
The ten fifteen to ten seventeen Market Street, if ten seventeen collapsed, it would likely hit ten fifteen. And to the east is an adjoining residential garage, which would also likely be in a collapse zone if the building fell.
So trying to take, trying to take an extra sixty days on this, that's not reasonable?
That's certainly at the council's discretion. As we approached this project, one of the significant improvements we made, and I would give credit to the city engineer for that, is in the past when the city had done demolitions, they were done somewhat anecdotally. And the city would just have a contractor knock down the building and haul it away and put some dirt in the hole and move on. And we looked at best management practices in terms of ensuring that what we were leaving was a site that would drain properly and not cause problems for neighbors and that any environmental concerns or issues were properly remediated and that all the appropriate testing was done to ensure that we were aware of any substances there that had to be removed. And that's what the bid package and specifications called out. They were, they're in the backup materials, they are relatively detailed and we tried to make them as clear as possible. And both Alpine Demolition and Northern Illinois Service provided bids that were responsive that addressed all of those concerns. It was, the local bidder in this instance simply didn't, they didn't appreciate the requirements that were there, and they bid this as a knock-it-down, haul-it-away project. So the recommendation would have been, would be, as the city engineer indicated, to go with the responsive bidder.
Other discussion?
I'm not done. John, I think it probably rings a bell that the company that came in and did the building next to levels, they didn't even block off thirty-eight, the front of the building. I remember that the city got in there and took the light pole down ahead of time. But they kind of moved too fast, they didn't coordinate. And yeah, they lost the building out into thirty-eight, nobody had an accident. But as I recall, they didn't properly shut off the water lines and I saw some extensive work. I think they even ended up, the rumor is they had to pay fifty thousand dollars to the sanitary district to fix what they should have done had they known. So I guess my, maybe this is absolutely the golden star. It sounds like this process was probably developed from that original incident.
That incident was part, that incident and the experience I've had in another community are the inspiration for the development of the additional safety measures and best management practices in this document.
I'd rather see it done right. It's too bad we didn't get a local bidder, I'd like to see the money stay locally, but let's move forward.
Other discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call.
Baker?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finoukian?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven I?
Thank you, motion carried. Moving to Ordinance 2015-44, amending Chapter Seven, Water Service, Section seven dot eighteen, Water Rates, and Section seven dot nineteen, Procedures for Billing and Termination of Service. This ordinance is before us in second reading. I'll ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Noriko, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Markwart, discussion. I'll turn to Finance Director Haley on this item.
Thank you. This is before you for second reading. It is amending Chapter Seven on Water Services, Water Rates, and Procedures for Billing. The recommendation based on having a couple joint committee meetings with the Finance Committee and the City Council was to go with the Burns and McDonald's study scenario one, which was the four-and-a-half percent increase for five years, and then the CPI back to the practice we have now after that point. We're also recommending to change the billing cycle to bill every other month. All of this in conjunction with the sanitary sewer districts IGA, which we're currently negotiating with them right now. So the date that this would be effective would be April first, water consumption. So April, May, water consumption for bills that would be read in June and mailed out in July. But I would be happy to answer any questions, if anyone has any.
Kathy, in the Finance Advisory Committee consideration, there was concern for segregating the capital portion of the increase.
There were two concerns. One, they wanted to be sure that the state revolving loan program wasn't just an automatic or a given, that we were going to be reviewing where our fund balance levels were at in conjunction with that ten-year capital plan. Could we do it without going into that or using that program? And that, of course, would be analyzed and would have to be approved to, if we were to use those funds by council in the future. Second, yes, was the three percent or the three basis points of the four-and-a-half percent increase, they would like to be sure was segregated. So we will create a separate revenue line item for that amount. Currently, our financial policies state that twenty-five percent, it's one fund, the water fund, operations and capital. There is a capital water fund, but that is strictly for the impact fees, which have been tied to new water mains only. So Fund Sixty, twenty-five percent of the reserves in that fund should be set aside for operations. Anything above and beyond that would be available for capital. So three percent of that will have its own revenue line item. And then at the end of every fiscal year, we'll have two fund balances. So we'll show an operational fund balance and we'll show a capital fund balance in that fund. I think it would warrant bringing those financial policies up to, through the budget process again, just to review them and make sure that it's very clear in there as well, so.
Okay. Questions or discussion from council? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call.
Jacobson?
No.
Finoukian?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Six I?
Six I, motion carried, thank you. Ordinance 2015-46, amending Chapter Three, City Administration, Section three dot forty-three, City Administration, and Section E, Management Pay Plan. This ordinance is before us in second reading. I'll ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Snow, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Markwart, I'll turn to Finance Director Haley.
So this is also an amendment to Chapter Three, to the Management Pay Plan. This was a part of the Pay, Compensation, and Classification Study that was presented at the City Council meeting on April thirteenth of 2015. As part of this study, an economic adjustment for all non-bargaining unit employees was recommended for January first of 2016. Also included in this study, there was a three-phase increase for part-time employees that were well below the minimum range to get them up to that new minimum range by January of 2017. So this would be Phase Two of that increase as well. This two-and-a-half percent increase for non-bargaining unit employees is being implemented January one, whereas in years past, it was implemented in July, July first. So that is a savings of sixty-four thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars by moving this increase back six months. This dollar amount is going to impact the general fund by sixty-one thousand six hundred and ninety-seven dollars and the water fund and airport fund by twenty thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. All of these amounts are within the FY 2016 budget.
Okay. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call.
Jacobson?
No.
Finoukian?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Six I?
Motion carried. Ordinance 2015-47, amending Chapter Two, City Council, Section two dot oh two, Mayor Voting Power, and Section two dot oh three, Alderman Vacancies. And this is before us in first reading, is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved to approve, is, at first, to receive and file at first reading, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder, moved by Alderman Snow, seconded by Alderman Finoukian. Discussion, city manager or city attorney? City attorney?
Mayor, we've brought before you two proposed changes to Chapter Two of the city code. The first with respect to Section two point oh two, that has been an issue of some contention, and the city's practice has been to follow state law. Our recommendation is to eliminate any confusion over that practice by simply referencing the state law that is applicable and that governs the circumstances under which the mayor votes. The second, and perhaps more important issue, current city code, Section two point oh three, relates to filling aldermanic vacancies, such as the current vacancy in Ward Seven. We have provided to the public and to the council the relatively exhaustive memorandum that we prepared outlining the factual background and the legal background of that issue. We have confirmed the recommendations contained therein with both the County Election Authority and the Illinois State Board of Elections. We've cited case law from every level of courts in this state, going back to the time when the Illinois Constitution was amended to authorize local referendum, the sort that was initiated here, and also when there are subsequent changes in state law that rendered the city's 1977 referendum unconstitutional or unlawful as it was passed. The recommendation there, again, is to simply follow state law, which is what the city would be obligated to do in filling the aldermanic vacancy. So Section two point oh three becomes much shorter and simply indicates when there's a vacancy, we follow state law to fill that vacancy. Again, that is what the city is required to do as our current code is unenforceable.
Discussion or questions on this item? I'll ask for a roll call, then.
Finoukian?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven I?
Motion carried. Moving to Ordinance 2015-48, amending Chapter Thirty-eight, Intoxicating Liquors, Section thirty-eight dot oh nine K, Open Containers. And this is before us in first reading, is there a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Noriko, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Baker. City Attorney?
We bring to you tonight a request to contemplate a potential reduction in a fine contemplated by city code. The city, as do most municipalities, currently has an ordinance prohibiting the possession of open containers of alcoholic beverages on public rights-of-way and city streets. This is commonly utilized to address individuals walking with open cans of beer or open other alcoholic containers on the streets and right-of-ways. Under current city code, it's contemplated there'd be a minimum fine of between two and three hundred dollars for an offense. The city currently utilizes a mail-in process for certain low-intensity offenses where they can be resolved prior to being filed as a court case in the circuit court. That mail-in process is very effective in terms of allowing officers a low-intensity means of addressing and curbing behavior that can lead to more serious offenses, intervening with offenders before they progress in a chain of bad decisions or bad actions. What we're proposing here is that we clarify that the minimum fine, if it goes to court, is two hundred dollars rather than some ambiguity about two or three hundred, and that we'd recognize this offense as a mail-in violation, and in that circumstance, the fine would be seventy-five dollars. Again, this gives officers an opportunity to intervene with offenders early, help educate them about the law, give a low-intensity interaction with them that has a minimal sanction, but that will still hopefully meaningfully curb adverse behavior and try and address this behavior before it becomes something more serious.
Is there a question or discussion from council, Alderman Baker?
I don't see anyone objecting on the council here, but just as a point of clarification, the NIU officers like, and I don't know if it's changed, but when I did the ride-alongs a few years ago, they liked our local ordinance because it didn't, it didn't end up going on the person's permanent downstate Springfield record. It was a local ordinance where, I'm going to bet this because we're home rule, we can do this. But it certainly is better to have it as simply a fine than a major offense and have to go by the state law. Am I mistaken in this?
The mail-in process does offer that lower-intensity approach. Where an individual has a recurrent history of violations, or certainly where a more serious violation occurs, the officers have the ability to issue a formal complaint and go through the normal arrest process and address those more significant violations. But as you note, this does allow a good, lower-intensity, lower-impact approach to identifying and curbing unlawful behavior.
I, one of the things that I observed is that most of... One of the things that I observed is that most of, and I don't know how it is the last couple of years, because I haven't done a ride-along in a couple of years now, like for homecoming and big events, it seemed that most of the offenders that were walking down the sidewalk with an open container were either foreign students or people from another state. I mean, they just didn't know that it was illegal. But definitely, I think it's a benefit to make it a lower-dollar amount. So I'm in favor of it, unless you want to make it $50 instead of 75.
Alderman Noriko?
How was $75 arrived at versus, you know, just half, $100 or?
Well, honestly, on an annual basis, we conduct, and more often as needed, but at least annually, we conduct roll call training with the officers where we put together updates in codes or updates in state laws or other changes that are going to be of interest to them, and we go through and do roll call training for every shift. And in that process, one of the things that I do is talk with the officers and solicit feedback from them on what issues are we having that we don't have tools to address? What tools do we need to fix? What other changes do we need to make? You're going to see a series of ordinances here that we're going to be talking about, all of which evolved out of recommendations from our officers. So the dollar figure of $75 was initially a recommendation from the officers. Then we started looking at and comparing that to other offenses that we have, so you're going to see some similarity in later offenses.
Okay.
And comparing it to other sanctions that we have for things like parking citations and other low-intensity offenses. So it was trying to have some consistency across the board.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions or discussion? I'll ask for a roll call then.
Markwart?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seveni?
Motion carrying. Ordinance 201549, amending Chapter 52, Offenses Against Public Peace, Safety and Morals, Section 52.07, Sound Apparatus. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Noriko to receive and file. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Markwart. City Attorney?
Again, this came out of the same discussions. We have received a number of complaints at different times from residents who are impacted by individuals who have a vehicle with a loud stereo in it and who choose to park that vehicle, either park it on a roadway but not operating it, or park it in a private parking lot and play the stereo in a very loud fashion and in a fashion that disturbs neighbors. And if the vehicle isn't parked at someone's home or at their place of business, it can be challenging to find applicable ordinances that allow the officers an opportunity to intervene and try and preserve the quality of life of our residents. We went back and looked at current city code. Our existing city code, Section 52.07, regulates the use of vehicles with sound amplification apparatus for commercial purposes. So envision the old car being driven around with a bullhorn on the roof type thing. The existing code, as it's written, gave us some concern in looking at more modern case law and constitutional speech protections, because it is very clearly content-based speech restriction. It is directed specifically at commercial speech and regulates it in a slightly different fashion from other forms of speech. We also had some concerns about whether it identifies an objective standard that would be readily enforceable. What we've brought forward is a proposed ordinance that regulates sound apparatus throughout the city consistently when a radio or other amplifying device is being used on a public way, or when it's being used in a motor vehicle on a public way, or being used in a motor vehicle on private property. And the distinguishing feature with regard to sound apparatus from vehicles is the distance from the vehicle at which it can be heard. That mirrors state statutes that apply to vehicles being driven on a public roadway. It also mirrors case law upholding municipal ordinances in other communities in this state where they have sought to regulate this similar kind of behavior. Of note, it does not apply to offenses if they're, if, for example, a vehicle's participating in a city-permitted parade or some other city, similar city-permitted event. Those would be exempt from this ordinance.
Is there discussion or questions from council? Alderman Noriko?
As the mother of a teenage son, who has periodically been awakened by his arrival because of what his car is like, and has begun to think that I may need to start putting a bag on my head when I go out in my neighborhood, this makes great sense to me.
And again, this was a suggestion from our officers who are dealing with these kind of concerns and resident complaints on a daily basis.
And, you know, I fear for the hearing of this generation, because I can well imagine what the officers hear even more frequently than I do, and I have warned my son.
If you wish to recuse yourself, I'll understand. And then you can tell your son that it was our doing, not yours.
Other questions? Alderman Markwart?
How does this pertain to the ice cream truck? You know, playing, I'm sorry. Obviously, you know, because my grandkids can hear the ice cream truck from three blocks away, which is more than...
And they have a slogan on the truck, "Playing the chime is not a crime."
The city does have a food and beverage vehicle vending license that's applicable to ice cream trucks, and that ordinance goes through and contemplates, it addresses the sound, the lighting that they have to use, where they can and can't stop. So that would be a permitted type of vehicle, which would be exempt from this ordinance.
From that part.
Alderman Fanouken?
Dean, how is the 50-foot radius determined?
It'd be determined by the officer or by the complaining witness.
Well, no, I mean, how did you arrive at 50 feet as the distance?
If you look at the city's existing ordinances relating to disorderly houses and disorderly businesses, we use a 50-foot standard in those ordinances. In looking at case law, the courts have upheld standards as narrow as 25 feet and as distant as 100 or 150 feet. Again, trying to make our ordinances more consistent for officers to enforce, we recommend the 50-foot standing because it maintains the same standard for disorderly house, disorderly business, and these types of offenses.
Okay, just go a little further then, just from a noise point of view. You know, there's other things that happen in the city where PH systems carry much further than 50 feet from a fixed location. Are we going to address those also at this point?
The city does have other ordinances that address different types of noise pollution. As we become aware of other complaints, we look at how they fit into our code. With regard to this specific issue, it is an issue that, as Alderman Noriko indicated, is becoming more prevalent and is becoming the subject of more frequent resident complaints. So we wanted to have, again, a low-intensity tool available for officers to intervene and address an issue without having to bring in the Illinois EPA with a decibel meter and start establishing, you know, ambient noise levels and such. So we looked at a standard that would be enforceable and clear to residents, but that, again, would be consistent with our other ordinances and give the officers a good tool to address it.
All right, thank you.
Okay. We do have a motion before us to receive and file, Ordinance 201549. I'll ask for a roll call.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seveni?
Motion carrying. Ordinance 2015-50, amending Chapter 52, Offenses Against Public Peace, Safety and Morals, Section 52-85, Defacing Public Property. Is there a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Fanouken. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Markwart. City Attorney?
I get to address all of the fun issues this evening. One of the other issues that came up, both in terms of talking with our officers and also out of the downtown business owners group that the city participates in, is a concern regarding individuals who relieve themselves in public. With regard to our current city ordinance, it prohibits engaging that sort of behavior if you're on a public street or public right-of-way, but if a person steps off a street and urinates on a building, for example, that isn't governed by the city's code. In the downtown, there are many areas where if you're urinating in an alley, that may be prohibited, but if you take a step out of the alley and you're urinating on someone's private property or on their business, that wouldn't be addressed by our code. We have received a number of complaints about this, and from a practical perspective, when officers are interacting with people on the street, that distinction doesn't make a great deal of sense, to intervene with someone when they're standing in one spot and not intervene when they're engaged in the exact same behavior one foot over. We looked at ordinances, again, from around the state and around the country, and I am both pleased and troubled to report that this is an issue that faces communities around the country and not only the city of DeKalb. The ordinance here is, again, modeled after examples that we found in other communities and is intended to offer that, again, a low-intensity intervention. It is often the case that someone engaging in this behavior, if you can intervene early and have a positive interaction with them and redirect them towards more positive behavior, you may be able to prevent a higher-intensity offense later in the evening. So this was, again, an issue that was identified by officers and also by our downtown business owners, and we wanted to provide a tool for addressing that in a meaningful fashion.
Okay. Discussion or questions? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seveni?
Thank you. Motion carrying. Ordinance 201551, authorizing the execution of a plat of dedication for a public right-of-way of a portion of Oak Street. And this is before us in first reading. Is there a motion to receive and file? Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Markwart. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Jacobson. I'll turn to Planner Derek Highland on this side.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening before you is a plat of dedication for a public right-of-way along Oak Street. On the city's eastern side, Oak Street currently deadens into what appears to be a cul-de-sac. In reality, that last 200 feet is actually owned by the city of DeKalb, that is of the same portion and parcel of the public street garage and water buildings. Coal Pallet Services is intent on redeveloping their site, which is located just south of the city's public works, storage, water, and street garages. Brett and Scott Coe are here tonight for any questions that may arise, but in order for them to redevelop, they need to run utilities and all other underground services for their redevelopment. And instead of having to grant easements to each individual utility, it makes sense to take this portion that is owned by the city and dedicated as public rights-of-way to where the cul-de-sac terminates today. So in your backup, you have a plat of dedication that takes in that right-of-way that's approximately 190 feet by 75 feet, that would terminate at the end of that bowl of the cul-de-sac, thereby allowing not only coal pallets, but the city and other properties along what would become Oak Street, legal access to and from their properties.
Questions or discussion? Alderman Baker?
Boy, it's been many years since it's been brought to the council's attention that there was a wood dust pollution problem in that area. Is this going to be addressed at the same time, or has that already been remediated or fixed?
So what I understand from the coal pallets redevelopment of their site, it's an expansion. It would be improvements to the current treatment of the products in the woods. To answer your question, I believe all those concerns would be abated and realized once the facility was up and running. And if you care to hear from either of the partners for the business, they're here this evening to speak to that if that's a concern, but...
I'd love to hear, because I've spent hours and hours and hours hearing about problems over the last many years, and if this is a quid pro quo, then let's bend over backwards to help them. But if they have some sort of a PR comment they'd like to make, that's great. If not, then...
I believe this is necessary.
There have been a number of very meaningful improvements just in the past several years to their dust collection and control measures. One of the improvements that is being partially facilitated by this would be insulation of natural gas lines that would allow, instead of them to burn wood to generate the heat that they need, to burn natural gas, which would also reduce the amount of smoke generated for the neighborhood. But the concerns and complaints that we have had as a neighbor to this property and that other neighbors in the neighborhood have had have diminished greatly in the past several years. As Principal Planner Highland indicated, there are still room for some improvements, and as they go forward with their proposed renovation and as that goes through the site review process, there are good opportunities to continue to influence that in a positive direction.
Sounds like, sounds like you're going to get a yes from me.
Other discussions, questions? I'll ask for a roll call then.
Baker?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seveni?
Motion carrying. Ordinance 201552, amending the fiscal year June 30th, 2006, I'm sorry. Amending the fiscal year on June 30th, 2015 budget. And this is before us at first reading. I'm going to entertain discussion on this item and then ask for a motion to receive and file, wave second reading and pass the motion. So at this point, I'll turn to Finance Director Haley.
Thank you. So, yes, FY '15 audit is in its final phases. We should have it wrapped up and presented for the first council meeting in December. During the FY '13 and FY '14 audit, the city received a management comment from the audit team on their management letter, noting that there were nine funds and 12 funds correspondently that were over-budgeted parameters and recommended that the city adopt appropriate measures to investigate the cause of any future overages and adopt appropriate funding measures. Staff has certainly taken that seriously. It's one of the first things I looked at when I started here, and I know it feels like I've been here forever, but I wasn't here when we did the FY '15 budget even. So we have implemented a monthly review process to ensure that the city is staying within budgeted parameters. I want to note, none of these funds are large operating funds. You don't see the general fund on here. It's not the water fund. It's not the airport fund. Certainly, from time to time, a budget amendment is needed for an added capital expenditure, an additional project or change order that would come to council throughout the year. But in my past experience, it should be the exception and not so much the norm. So we really, I really try to keep within our budgeted parameters. For FY '15, there were only four funds out of 29 funds that did exceed the budgeted dollars, which is a large decrease from the prior years. These funds were the refuse fund, the motor fuel tax fund, the police pension fund, which the city receives budgeted dollars from a third party that works for the pension fund. They have separate accounting, an accounting team. And then the liability and property insurance fund. So of those four funds, the refuse fund, while the expenditures came in higher, the revenues also came in higher. This fund did comply with the current agreement on file. I believe it's a five-year agreement, and it truly is a sub-fund of the general fund. Any excess revenues or expenditures goes to the general fund on an annual basis, and down the line, it has been recommended by the audit team to just roll that into the general fund. The motor fuel tax fund, past practice has shown the city not doing any carryover amendments, which you'll see is my next amendment, to include past budget items approved but not yet paid for. In the case of MFT, the Illinois Department of Transportation, known as IDOT, typically has a very large lag in invoicing for projects, or there are times when a project name may not be invoiced within a 12-month period and will cross fiscal years. Staff here has not incorporated that carryover process, so I am slowly trying to incorporate that carryover process, but you'll see that it's... that carryover process, but you'll see that it's being recommended for a 15 budget amendment and no FY16 budget carryover dollars because there are no dollars to carry over this year. So... And the liability insurance claims came in higher than anticipated, however, the revenues of this fund also came in higher. And then finally, the police pension fund dollars did not accurately reflect their pension payments for disability pensions and retiree pensions, which you'll see that can be fairly common for police and fire. It's sometimes hard to really know who's going to retire or who's going to want a refund of their dollars, so... And that is their largest expenditure. So the impact from the excess expenditures over appropriation adjustments will increase the budget amount. However, both the refuse fund and the liability insurance fund adjustments are offset by corresponding revenues. These adjustments have been incorporated into the fund balance projections for fiscal year-end 2015. All actual expenditures within the refuse fund and liability insurance fund were in compliance with the current agreements and approved by council. All expenditures with the motor fuel tax fund were also approved by council and funds were appropriated from IDOT. Note, none of these amendments will affect the general fund. So at this time, we are requesting that this be passed on first reading, waiver of second reading, in order to incorporate this into our final comprehensive financial report that is being prepared as we speak. And I believe a two-thirds supermajority vote of council is required.
Correct. Let me, at this point, ask for a motion to receive and file, ordinance 2015-52. Is there a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Noriko. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Fanukin. Roll call. Well, is there discussion? Roll call.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven Eye?
Motion carried to receive and file. Is there a motion to waive second reading and pass ordinance 2015-52?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Fanukin. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Markwart. Discussion or questions? I'll ask for a roll call.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven Eye?
Motion carried. Moving to ordinance 2015-53, amending the fiscal year-end June 30th, 2016 budget and approving the carryover of fiscal year-end June 30th, 2015 expenses into fiscal year-end June 30th, 2016 budget. At this point, I'll ask for a motion to receive and file.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Snow. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Markwart. Finance Director Haley?
Thank you. So this is a budget amendment for the June 30th, 2016 budget. These are... This is a request for carryover dollars from FY 2015 for items that are large capital items or projects. You know, just because we don't spend all our office supplies doesn't mean we can carry over our office supplies. It would be the fact that we didn't receive the fire engine, the ladder truck, in... by the end of June 30th. I don't know if we've received it yet. We should be receiving it soon. But those dollars were budgeted in 2015. We don't want to re-budget them, so we're going to carry those dollars over into 2016 to follow that expenditure. So this, I don't think, has been a past practice. And again, there were four items in the general fund, one in the fleet replacement fund, and two within the water fund, requests to be carried over. Four of those items in the general fund were projects. One was before you tonight, previous, which was the donation for the IHSA, the $12,500. The strategic plan crossed over fiscal years, so some of those dollars were not expended in 2015 and were expended in 2016. The generally accepted accounting principles dictates to us when an expense can be recognized, either based on a delivery date or a completion date or when that service was provided. So several of those services for the strategic plan for the search firm were provided in fiscal '16. And then there were some dollars for this property at 622 West Lincoln that also crossed fiscal years. We cannot carry over dollars more than we have available, so it's really just those dollars remaining out of that budget, whatever wasn't expensed. The ladder truck for the fire department was the fleet fund item, and then the water fund was the first street water main project and well number seven repair. I did show that while this does increase budgeted dollars, the effect on the fund balance is still showing you where we have been at because we have been projecting these costs to be expended all along, either within our projections for fiscal '15 or '16.
Discussion or questions from council? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven Eye?
Motion carried. Is there a motion to waive second reading and pass ordinance 2015-53 this evening?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Snow. Is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Noriko, seconded. Further discussion, I'll ask for a roll call.
Markwart?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven Eye?
Motion carried. Moving to item G10, thank you, Kathy. Waiver of competitive bids and authorization to negotiate with Midwest Landscape and Tree Care in and Mount not to exceed $60,000 for downtown snow removal. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Noriko. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Baker. City Engineer Laskowski.
Evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we're... Going to explain to you why we're going to try to waive bids in this instance. The sidewalks, this project typically goes out on an annual basis. The sidewalks in the central business district around Route 38, Route 23, and then the alleys are all included in this bid. I prepared this table, and I want to go through it with you to further explain why we're asking to waive bids in this instance. Looking at the top table, the one that's highlighted in orange are the bids that we received this time. There were two bids that we received, one from Midwest Landscape and one from Langton Snow Solutions. The bid documents gave the contractor the option to bid either the same price for all three years or provide a price with an escalator for subsequent years. In this instance, you'll see that Langton Snow Solutions was significantly higher than Midwest Landscape and Tree Care. So looking at the first row under the orange row, you'll see that Central Business District sidewalks were... Came in with a bid from Midwest Landscape and Tree Care between $135 and $155 per hour, and this was dependent on what type of machine they would be clearing the sidewalks with. Langton Snow Solutions, in this instance, provided an hourly price of $552, so it was significantly higher than the low bid. What you'll also notice in this table is the very bottom two rows, which are the alleys north of the Union Pacific Railroad and the alleys south of the Union Pacific Railroad. There was no price submitted by Midwest Tree, Landscape and Tree Care. And this is one of the primary reasons that we're asking to waive bids in this instance is because the next highest price we received was $148 an hour. Now, looking at that cost for $148 an hour, I want to draw your attention to the bottom two rows in the table that's outlined in green. If you take a look at how much we were spending per hour on the alleys in years 15... Fiscal years 13 through 15, you'll see that the four bids that we received in that year were $60, $97, $70, and $65. So in this case, the reason we're asking to waive bids is we're very confident that we can achieve the exact... Or very close to the prices with Midwest Landscape and Tree Care for the sidewalks in the amounts of $135 and $155 in that range. What the purpose would be is to negotiate a price for the alleys north and south of the UP Railroad in something in the order of magnitude of what was demonstrated in the past. When we reached out to Midwest Landscape to find out why they didn't provide us with a price for the alleys, they had indicated that they received a lot of complaints and there was a lot of having to go back and replow the alleys. So it wasn't... They were losing money, essentially, with the prices that they submitted in the past, and it was more of a headache for them than they felt it would be. After we contacted them again, they were inclined to negotiate with us on that operation, and so we'd like to engage them and get a number from them for plowing the alleys on the north and south side of the town. Yes?
Alderman Baker?
It seems pretty simple, just have them put a V-plow on it and run through it once, and the people complain, say, you know, it's just like the front. If you get a little snow blocking your sidewalk, it's something you got to deal with. But if they got to keep going back and they don't get paid for going back, or their guys have already gone home, and they got to wake somebody up to come back, I understand what you're saying. That's a real big problem. So I... Maybe... I don't know if we have to have a council resolution on it, or you just adopt, this is the snow plan, but there would be an easier way to do it, I would think, if you just have a policy set.
So you'd be suggesting specifying a different type of operation used to plow those alleys?
I don't know if they have a V-plow, but a V-plow would be the real... The really easy way to do it, because you could drive through it 10, 15 miles an hour. I used to have a... For about 20 years, I had a service, and I had four or five Bobcats and three big diesel trucks with V-plows, and I even opened up some of the streets that weren't accepted by the city yet as part of my operation, and you just put the plow in a V and drive through once, and you're done. You don't have to worry about where it goes, if you say that that's going to be our policy.
I think that could be something we add in the documents in the future to give them the option of choosing that methodology, and it might bring the costs down.
Well, you're going to have to educate the neighbors and just show them that it's costing a fortune to do it to their convenience.
Sure.
Now, of course, I'm probably going to get some cards and letters. It's not in my ward.
To my recollection, John, the concerns were large deposits of snow piles in the alleys that were blocking either garages or alley traffic.
Okay. Yeah, that... I think that would be addressed with the supervision of this contract. We'd outline the expectations while we're speaking with the service provider.
Okay. Alderman Snow?
Yeah, I was going to say, I think that's probably the case. I know in our alley, you have garages on both sides of the alley. Sometimes you have garages right across from each other, and sometimes they have to decide, well, which side do they block in, and which way do they move the snow? So I'm guessing that's kind of the question they have when people call. They've just plowed their driveway through the alley, and the plow comes through and pushes it in. I can see where the frustration is.
Well, if you get a nine-foot V-plow and you set it, then it's equal snow both sides.
It's still... I think, you know, the fact that somebody's just plowed it, and regardless of how you do it... And I always clear my own. I've got a snow blower that I can do that even when the snow plow comes through, but I think there's some people that have to pay for somebody else to come back a second or third time is the issue. So if they could be worked out, that, you know, that'd be great.
That happens on every city street where the driveways go in the front. I dealt with that for years on Devenir Farm and the Knowles, and it's just when we have a lot of snow, it's just what you got to deal with.
We're going to have a mild winter this year.
It's not even a snow anyway.
I mean, I guess I have two comments, just one is more broad and one is more directed at this year's quotes. I mean, is there a reason we had so few bidders this year? Do we have any indication of why there were so many less submitted bids?
We distributed it to 10, and I didn't follow up, to be honest with you. I can ask Mark, maybe, if he had any... Have you any contact with any of the other applicants?
This is purely speculation, but in the 25 years that I've been doing this, the Ryan family has basically taken this bid away from all the other contractors every time but twice. And it's speculation, but I imagine they probably get tired of bidding a contract that they never win. And the two times that other contractors did get the bid, the Ryans had to come back in and bail them out when we had the 21 inches of snow. So I'm speculating, but I think they just figured it's... They're going up against somebody that they're not going to compete with. And one question for Alderman Baker. One of the reasons that you cannot do a V-plow one direction only is the width of the garbage trucks. We need to go wide enough that the back duals don't start mounting the snow and getting higher and higher and higher, so we definitely need to go two ways, though.
Well, that's why I brought it up. I mean, there is... Yeah, so you really need to windrow it to the right and come back down and windrow it to the left?
We do. We really need to get it wide enough, or after 15, 20 inches of snow in different intervals, the alley starts getting narrower and narrower, and then the garbage trucks have a hard time navigating.
Well, that's an even better solution, because it still puts half the snow one way, half the snow the other way. So I think you're agreeing with me, I think.
Yes, absolutely.
But to answer the other question on the lack of bids, the place up in Route 64 that I bought a new plow there a couple of years ago, and this spring I went in to say, hey, I might be willing to sell that back, and they laughed, and they said, there was only two pushes last year. Everybody went out of business. There isn't anybody left. They don't want the used plow. They've got several years' supply if it starts snowing again.
Alderman Jacobson?
My second question is, and when looking at some of these... And again, this is the more higher-level question, the CBD and the sidewalks. I mean, is this something that would make more sense that we set up an SSA for, for those business owners that are benefiting from it, to pay for it? I mean, in many of the neighborhoods, we have special services, whether it's lighting in Greek Row or landscape maintenance in Heartland Fields, especially in the first ward. Those owners are certainly getting a major benefit from it. Well, the other business owners and the other homeowners have to deal with their own snow removal, so why are they paying for it, I guess, is my question.
Could you repeat that question? You lost me.
Would it make more sense for us to set up an SSA that the business owners pay for this cost? Why are the city taxpayers...
The downtown?
Downtown and the sidewalks on 23.
When the TIF expires, I got you.
Again, it's one of those things that every other business owner elsewhere has to pay for that service. I know it's the reality of owning property, that you have to maintain the property and you have to have it plowed and the sidewalks taken care of, and if they're getting that benefit, I think they should be asked to pay for it, at least partially, if not all of it.
Well, this all started many years ago, before me, because the... It's a state road highway, and all that snow is pushed... There's no yard to push it up on, and it's all flung right onto the sidewalks, so it's our responsibility as a city rightfully so to take care of it. And, fine, if you want to do Route 38 only, but that doesn't seem fair to the other downtown businesses. And I believe it's TIF-eligible still, isn't it, for the downtown? Isn't that where we're paying it out of the TIF?
Yeah, I'm not sure with the operations, if that would be a TIF-eligible expense or not.
Maybe in the old days, maybe we're doing it right now. Okay.
Other discussion questions? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call. Motion.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Sorry.
It would have been more fun if Alderman Snow had said no, then there wouldn't be any snow. I'll say yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven Eye?
Motion carried. Thank you. Resolution 2015-117, authorizing payments to Superior Diesel Incorporated for maintenance and repairs to city diesel engine vehicles in excess of $20,000. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanukin. Is there a second?
Under the terms of the new city's purchasing manual adopted in August of 2015, any purchases for a vendor exceeding $20,000 must go to council for approval. The impact of having an aged inventory of diesel engine fleet is beginning to impact the city's maintenance repair costs. As a result of this aged fleet, the city has had two ambulances in need of expensive repairs already this fiscal year. Due to the specialized nature of the repairs needed for diesel engines, the city has and would like to continue to utilize Superior Diesel. Currently, the fleet inventory for the city dates back to 1974. There are several of these vehicles that have large diesel engines and the city is limited to the number of locations within city limits where these ambulances and fire engines can be repaired. Recently, one of the fire engines and two ambulance both suffered significant mechanical failures. Staff reviewed the mechanical failures to assess if the repairs needed could be accomplished in-house and determined that they could not. The fire engine was sent to a different vendor other than Superior Diesel Incorporated and it was determined that the other vendor also could not repair the vehicle. Therefore, Superior Diesel has become the vendor of choice since they have confirmed their ability to do the repairs needed on these diesel engine vehicles. Superior Diesel has a proven track record with the city. They have the diagnostic equipment needed and the compatibility with the city's fleet. They've also been extremely timely and efficient, understanding the need to complete these repairs quickly in order to keep the city's fleet of emergency vehicles in operation. Due to the number of repairs already needed on the city's existing fleet, the total maintenance cost projected to be spent at Superior Diesel is anticipated to exceed $20,000 for fiscal 2016. Accordingly, this item is being brought to council for approval. The approval of this expenditure is being recommended to permit continued operations of our emergency first responders. This approval would authorize staff to spend within budgeted amounts without being constrained by the $20,000 staff spending authority. It is not practical to bring individual repairs to council for pre-approved as such a practice would significantly delay the repairs to these emergency vehicles. As a component of the city's effort to be more transparent where vendors are anticipated to exceed $20,000 within a given fiscal year, they're being identified in advance and brought to council for approval. The dollars are budgeted for the maintenance of all city vehicles. No budget amendment at this time is being recommended as this total cost is unknown and present costs are within budgeted amounts.
Discussion or questions of Kathy? Alderman Baker?
I know that we had Superior Diesel move from Waterman to Harvester Drive in DeKalb. Are they still located on Harvester Drive, their local business?
Yes, according to our spreadsheet.
Hoorah to keep it local and it's a longstanding company and you've got my yes.
Alderman Snow?
I just wanted to point out, you know, earlier in tonight's agenda, we approved two new vehicles and I just, for the public's sake, we do keep track of all the repairs on every vehicle and so vehicles are not just replaced because they're getting old. They're getting replaced because the cost of repairing those vehicles exceed the cost of a new vehicle over the long term. So, you know, I'm certainly in favor of repairing vehicles and we can do that and that's, should be our first choice, but when we replace a vehicle, it's because the cost of repairs greatly, starts to exceed the value of the vehicle.
Other questions, discussion? I do have a motion?
Yes, you do.
Okay. Roll call.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finukin?
Yes.
Mark Hart?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven Eye?
Motion carrying. Resolution 2015-118, establishing an estimated annual tax levy ceiling for tax year 2015. Is there a motion?
I'll move it.
Moved by Alderman Snow. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Finukin. I'll turn to Finance Director Haley at this point.
So, this is the beginning of what I call our tax levy season. Chapter 35, Section 200 slash 18 dash 60 of the Illinois compiled statutes requires that not less than 20 days prior to the adoption of its aggregate levy, the city council shall determine the amounts of money estimated to be necessary to be raised by taxation for that year upon the taxable property in its district. By passing this estimated proposed tax levy, the city council will set a ceiling of the maximum level that can be requested this levy year. It must be noted that this estimated levy is a ceiling and not a floor. The city can later pass a levy that is lower than this estimated amount, but it cannot pass a levy that is higher than this estimated amount. Additionally, the Truth in Taxation statute requires presentation that compares the prior year levy to the current year levy. This means that any levy that is more than 105% of the amount extended in the prior year is subject to a public hearing. A Truth in Taxation black box notice will be timely published and a public hearing will be held at November 23, the city council meeting. At the November 23 city council meeting, there will also be the first reading of the tax levy itself and then December 14 will be the second reading of the tax levy. The finance committee has had one meeting so far this tax levy year. We have a second meeting scheduled for tomorrow night at 5 o'clock. There's been a lot of new changes and regulations during this season with some tax bills that are out there, which I'll go into a little bit in a moment. But this estimate has used the following assumptions. The city has funded through property taxes a portion of their Illinois municipal retirement fund employer obligations as well as a portion of their social security employer obligations as well as funding police and fire pension funds based on an actuarial valuation. We did receive an actuarial valuation from an independent third-party actuary and he estimated two methods of funding. The state allows for two methods of funding for the pension funds. The city has in, since 2011, used the lower level of funding the pension funds. We have left the IMRF and social security contributions at the same level. However, this is not funding the 100% of the city's obligation for these contributions. Debt payments, we are keeping the library debt payment in there, but we are showing in this estimate not abating all the debt to possibly comply with what's called Senate Bill 318, which I will go into in a minute as well. And then the library, we also have to put in this estimate, which we show a little bit higher. Strictly an estimate, whatever the library board passes is what we will put on their, our levy for first and second reading. I think I said the city has in passed funded at the lower state method of funding for the two police and fire pension funds. We are recommending to go back to the higher level of funding for those pension funds based on several factors. One, there have been some actuarial valuation changes. Two, how they're calculating what the city's contribution needs to be for these pension funds. They changed the mortality tables stating that people are living longer. People are living longer, so you have to fund it higher. So those dollars came in a little bit higher based on that valuation. We also have to think about the potential of the Moody's rating. While our rating stayed the same as AA2, which is a fabulous rating and I wouldn't, you know, it's a great rating. They did apply that negative outlook, so we wanna be cognizant of that as well. And part of that negative outlook was based on our net pension liability, which has grown over time, which will continue to grow over time if we don't start funding at a higher level because of regulations through the Government Accounting Standards Board uses the higher level of funding when they calculate their net pension liability and Moody's uses that higher level of funding when they calculate their net pension liability. We have also, I think I stated in this estimate, recommended not abating all the debt. That is going back to the Senate Bill 318, which is discussing a potential property tax freeze and could freeze the city's aggregate debt levy and debt service levy dollar amounts. The current aggregate levy for the city is strictly the IMRF portion and the social security portion. So the pension funds, police and fire pension fund portion of the levy at this time is not being part of that property tax freeze or will not be incorporated in that freeze. We should be able to increase those dollars if needed to in the future. However, that aggregate levy does get frozen and that becomes our base levy. So there's discussion on increasing that corporate portion or do we wanna put in anything for police protection or fire protection? There's a lot of different funding mechanisms in a city's aggregate portion of their tax levy. So again, you can see there's a lot of discussion. Tomorrow night's gonna be a great meeting. The agenda that is in, on the website has a lot of very valuable information and of course, I'm always available to discuss or talk at any time. So just to reiterate that this is an estimated levy, represents the ceiling that the city cannot later exceed. We are having an additional meeting tomorrow night. The proposed levy included herein for use as a ceiling represents the most conservative approach based on this new legis, new legislation with Senate Bill 318, the new GASB regulations for the actuarial assumptions and the negative outlook that was recently assigned to the city's bond rating for Moody's. By approving this estimated levy, the city will have the greatest flexibility in determining what the final levy will be for the coming year. And this tax levy will be for the fiscal '17 budget. So we're in, started in '15, went to '16, now we're in '17. Anything I wanna add? I would be happy to answer any questions.
Discussion or questions of Kathy? Alderman Noriko?
Kathy, the assumptions for the police and fire pension contribution, is there any option to use like a blended rate and then over time go to the higher rate calculation or is it one or the other?
So we do have three options that we're gonna discuss tomorrow night with the finance committee. Staying at the lowest level of funding for those pension funds, phasing in back to the higher level or jumping right to the higher level. So it's absolutely something we'll be discussing.
Alderman Baker?
The fundamental assumption that, I think maybe it was last year, that got pointed out from the audience was, are we assuming that we're just gonna create another TIF and that TIF money doesn't become available? Or will there be an assumption that the TIFs are all going away and that we'll have more money to load it in at the time that the TIFs are off? I mean, we never dealt with that.
So I don't know about creating a new TIF. The TIFs will, are, we're trying to phase out the general fund's reliance on that TIF revenue over the next four to five to six years. And while once that TIF ends, we could capture that growth and potentially increase that portion of our property tax dollars, but the offset of the reliance that we've been, that we've had on that transferring from TIF over the, I don't know how many years, 20 years, is greater, that revenue source was greater than what that potential property tax increase to the general fund would be. So there's still gonna be a gap there.
So basically, the money that we've taken for administering the TIF is more than our portion that we'll receive once the TIF disappears?
Yeah, it's all dependent on the EAV, but as of right now, that's what it looks like, yes.
So there won't be a windfall?
No.
Well, okay, it never got answered last year. You explained it extremely well. Thank you.
Alderman Snow?
I think it's important to point out, this is not setting a tax levy tonight. It's setting a maximum, so there still will be public discussion, there'll be a public hearing, there'll be discussion among council members. But I also might wanna point out that, you know, part of this has been exasperated because apparently for the last five years anyway, the city has not done any increase to its property tax rate. You know, it's only covered new construction and yes, your tax bills for the city have probably only varied at a dollar or two. I mean, I looked at mine over the last few years and the, you know, percentage jumps because of your equalized assessed valuation jumps, but the city has held the line on its property tax rate and has not increased it apparently for about five years. So I think it's no surprise that suddenly, you know, the bill has come due and pensions are underfunded. Our tax is too high, yes. Our city tax is too low, I think is really the question and that's, that's what we have to wrestle with, since the city portion is only 8% of your property tax bill. But it will be an interesting discussion.
Didn't it get up to 10% last year? I just need to refresh my memory.
We didn't increase it, we only increased it, I believe, last year only for new construction. The dollar amount we leveled for current property owner, current EAV did not change and that's my understanding of what's happened the last few years, as I do remember that discussion. And I, I was in favor of at least inflationary increase of 1%, 2% or something along that line and apparently the council has decided the last few years not to even do that. So it's no, should be no surprise that the stress level against those bills gets higher every year when you don't fund it every year.
It wasn't that long ago, we were holding the line for at least five years at 6.1%.
Well, I mean, you look at the dollar amount that has changed and not the percent, because yes, valuations of housing is going down and of course, that's always an issue, especially if you're selling a property and not buying a new property. But the actual dollars that you've been paying for city services has not gone up except maybe for a dollar or two, depending on what your evaluation has changed. So, you know, can we reduce it? Yes, but we'd have to reduce services and what, 75, 80% of the city budget is fire, police and streets department, so, you know, we haven't decided to reduce personnel, so we're in this pickle.
Further discussion, questions? Alderman Noriko?
Well, the issue of pension liability and if you don't pay what you need to pay, the state of Illinois is a perfect example of what happens and, you know, the liability is beyond belief and the state has had to take a look at some, you know, what, by some people, what is perceived as some drastic measures. And, you know, I would hate for the city of DeKalb to really have its back up against the wall so that we, we didn't have any options. So I think we're going to have to think long and hard about what we're going to do because we have constituents, obviously, but we also have an obligation to the retirees, the people who will be retiring and whatever we can do for, to get back to fiscal stability.
And I'd like to just clarify, City Manager Gore, based on our conversation this afternoon, and I think it's contained in the Finance Advisory Committee exhibits, that the city of DeKalb has been covering the cost to existing pensioners. So we have been covering our pension cost.
Yes, I'm sorry. I should've clarified what I was saying.
The concern becomes this is funding the actuarial of future retirees.
Absolutely, and I, if, for those of you that haven't seen it, I strongly recommend that you look through the entire Finance Advisory Committee packet. Director Haley has included the memo from the last meeting, October 27, and has added even more in-depth analysis for the committee meeting tomorrow. She's shown 19 years' worth of history of not only the police and fire pension funds, but social security and IMRF and you can project out, if you look at the trend lines as to what's happening, in particular with police and fire pension funds. So this is a area, as I shared with the mayor this afternoon in previous discussion, that it may be new to the city of DeKalb, but this pension fund issue has been hitting municipalities throughout the state of Illinois over the last number of years. And when you look at, just to maintain the status quo with the current way that we're funding the pensions, the recommendation is to fund it at $675,000 per year for the police and fire pension fund. So this is an issue that will continue not only this year, but years into the future.
Thank you. I would note also that the Finance Advisory Committee meeting scheduled for tomorrow night was a consensus from the Finance Advisory Committee as they put their calendars together and tomorrow night was the best. and tomorrow night was the best time that they could get participation focused on the discussion. Further discussion or questions? Alderman-Jacobson?
Again, I think we have to be very careful that we don't lose sight of the bigger picture here. Is it important to fund pensions? Yes. But the problem is that we have too many staff at too high a salaries, taking too many benefits to be able to afford them. That's the problem. The symptom is the pension payments going up. You're asking the residents of this town who have seen negative valuations of their, in their house, who their house value still hasn't recovered or increased, but for a meager 1%, to tighten their belt more. The 12,000 homeowners to tighten their belt further to support a few hundred retirees. That system isn't fundamentally fair. There's a problem with that system. There's a problem that says you get 100% match day one and expect seven, eight, 10% returns every year. The market doesn't give that to the private sector, the market doesn't give that to the homeowner, the market doesn't give that to the people you're asking to pay this bill, yet you're asking them to pay more in to cover the retirees. Again, I was out in the community this week, and I got cornered by several people, and the expletives they use to describe us as council members and staff in particular, I can't repeat here. I mean, they, it's getting to the point that people cannot afford to live here, and they don't want to live here to continue to pay these taxes. To claim that we're amongst the lowest taxes of our comparables, I think is certainly not truthful, when you look at the overall tax rate, when we're shown as one of the top 10 counties in Illinois and probably 10 in the, in the country in terms of property taxes that our residents are paying. I appreciate the fact that, that we've made a commitment to the retirees. The reality going forward is something desperately needs to change, both at the city level and the state level, at the federal level. Pensions don't work. They don't, they can't, they can't work. You cannot define and give someone 70% of a six-figure salary for the rest of their lives. That is the, the cause of the problem here. And until we start talking about the reductions in staffing that are going to need to occur, the reductions in how we do things, whether it's part-time staff versus full-time staff, when we start throwing around words like outsourcing and layoffs and those things, those are the reality of the situation. We're 50% unfunded, we're $50 million underfunded at this point, because the system can't work. It's not whether we throw more money, you can keep raising taxes and raising taxes and raising taxes until everybody in this community pulls up stakes and leaves. And then what happens to the retirees when no one's paying in? The reality is, the system doesn't work, and we need to take the lead and fix the problem and start having the tough discussions it's going to take to fix that problem. Not just say, well, residents, homeowners, sorry, we realize times are tough, we realize you haven't gotten raises, we realize you're not making six figures, we realize your average income is $30,000, but you know, you need to buckle down so these 200 or 300 employees can make sure their retirements are covered. Again, there is a fundamental problem in fairness in asking them to do that, and our responsibility is to the constituents. We were voted in by the constituents as a whole, not 200 city employees that are receiving benefits. And that's who we need to keep our eye on and who we're up here to represent.
I'll just briefly respond to one point. Just to clarify, pensions are set by the state, and so I agree that there needs to be changes at the state level. We really have no authority to change the pensions for 80% of our employees, so it's, it's state-mandated benefits. And, and the fact is, we haven't asked the citizens to pay more the last five years. We're only one of 10 taxing districts or something like that. So to put the full burden on the city council, I think is a little bit unfair.
Other discussion questions? Okay, the question before us is setting the ceiling on the tax levy, as Finance Director Haley has indicated, this topic will be in front of Finance Advisory Commission, will be in front of us as a public hearing, and back in front of us, the actual levy will be back in front of us for further action in the, in the upcoming meetings. Not seeing further discussion at this point, I'll ask for a roll call.
Setting the ceiling to what? It's not been set.
Sorry.
Everybody listening at home has got to be screaming at their TVs right now.
The ceiling in the resolution is being set to $8,626,769. Keeping in mind that 1.9 million of that is the estimate for the library as well, so...
And what was it?
And to be clear, that's a 40% increase.
And what was it last year?
The ceiling last year was, I don't have, it was 7.9 million, I believe.
And so we're, the ceiling, you're, we're going up...
The ceiling, the 40% would be from the actual levy to the ceiling, so the actual last year's levy to the ceiling.
Is that what you're asking, Dave? Last year's?
What was our actual last year? Because there's people listening at home and I'm...
Four million, 763?
That didn't include the library, though. So without the library, the ceiling's at 6.63 million versus what was actually levied, 4.763 million. Again, that's what actually was levied. The ceiling, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have what we set the ceiling at last year, but it was...
So we only leveled 4.763, and we're going to set a ceiling of 6.63?
Correct. The ceiling is being set, Dave, for negotiating purposes and looking at options. As Kathy has indicated, we can't come back and levy more than the ceiling.
And two of the increases are based on the potential of that property tax freeze for the Senate Bill 318, where those levies for debt services could be frozen at a, you know, if we don't, if we continue to abate all of our debt, our debt service levy stays low. And then the aggregate levy gets set at that base, that bottom floor also for this levy year, potentially.
Okay, well, I understand this is not a vote for what we're actually going to levy.
Correct.
And to, just so that the debate can start somewhere, you want to throw it in high, and I'm okay with that. Doesn't mean I'll say yes at the other end, though.
Correct.
With that, I'll ask for the question, roll call.
Baker?
No.
No.
Fanukin?
Realizing that it's a jumping off point, yes.
Markwart?
And I don't want to pay any more for my own personal property taxes, but yes, we have to start somewhere.
Snow?
Yeah, my comment would be, this is not setting the tax levy, my guess is it'll be lower than what the maximum is, but I think the discussion needs to be had, and we shouldn't shy away from the discussion. So yes.
Narico?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Fiveye?
Thank you. Motion, Carrie. Thank you, Director Haley. Communications, Alderman-Jacobson?
I would like to make one comment and follow-up to Alderman-Snow's comment. I agree with you, the state sets the pensions, but it's our job to set the staffing levels and to direct the staff and to set staff salaries, and I think we need to take a much closer look at how we're doing that going forward, and that's the responsibility we bear, and that is our responsibility.
Just a couple items, if I may. First of all, congratulations to DeKalb Football on advancing to the corner finals, hopefully they can continue. They host Montini this Saturday at DeKalb High School at 1:00. This Friday, the Salvation Army in cooperation with WLVK is doing their annual Let's Talk Turkey, where they're accepting both monetary donations and donation of live turkeys, not live turkeys, but turkeys, beginning at 6:00 AM till 5:00 PM at the Salvation Army. And then also, I had the opportunity last week to attend the county's nonprofit meeting, trying to address some of the issues not-for-profit are having in light of the nonpassage due to the state budget. I'm just going to make kind of a general plea, if you have a favorite not-for-profit that you tend to support, if you could do that at this point, they can certainly use the extra support right now.
Thank you. Alderman-Markwart?
Sorry, I'm a little slow. I got a migraine about an hour ago, and I can't see anything over this way.
Just say no report.
Well, I have something that's kind of annoying to me, and it's the leaves. Put the leaves on your parkway, not in the street, please. My neighbor kid down the way was playing in the pile up in the street, and, you know, cars are going by, and she's little, she almost got hit. So put your leaf pile up in the grass and not into the thing so that when it rains on Wednesday, we don't have flooding, plus kids are safe. It's just, it's a pet peeve of mine. Thank you.
Mark, the leaf collector can reach six, 10 feet onto their parkway?
We try to keep it within five to six feet.
Five to six?
It'll reach, but when you go 12 feet wide, you can only imagine how much extra raining staff has to do to get it to.
Okay. But there's plenty of room on the parkway for leaves. Thank you. Alderman-Snow?
No report.
Alderman-Narico?
I would just like to mention that I've made plans through the city to, with city staff, to do a ward meeting on Saturday, December 5, from 10:00 to 11:30. I'd like to invite all ward citizens. I'm sure I'll probably have a smaller group than all of the ward citizens, but I plan to give a recap of my first six months on the council and then address questions, issues, concerns.
Thank you. Alderman-Baker?
Got some leaves in my front yard, ready for you guys. Thank you. No report.
All right. Two items I'd like to address. One, in light of the lack of a state budget, our local nonprofits have met recently and have discussed the impact that that situation is having on their budgets. It's been brought to my attention that city council may be asked to address the issue if the lack of a state budget continues. I would note that there certainly is moral support to those nonprofit agencies. The city currently is funding social services in an aggregate form on an annual basis of This includes the in-kind space that we're providing, social service agencies at 330 Grove Street. So I just want to bring to attention the, the amount that is going into those nonprofit social services at the present time. I encourage the state legislature to effectively negotiate and reach a state budget as soon as possible. The second item I'd like to address is the structure of pension reform. Our council of governance, Metro West, has been addressing the issue of pension reform at the state level. One of the approaches that they are suggesting is the efficiency that could come from consolidating the 600-plus pension, public safety pension funds into one or two IMRF-type funds. Rather than investing smaller pools of money, it would allow the opportunity for consolidation of those public safety pension funds. It could be a next step. While we're waiting the Supreme Court's ruling on constitutionality of pension reforms, it could be a start. The third item I'd like to address is the issue Alderman-Jacobson raises relative to staffing levels. We, as a council, are focused on core services. We continually look at those staffing levels and are setting those at an appropriate level to deliver value to our taxpayers and citizens. City Manager Gora?
Only thing I'd like to report is a follow-up item on IHSA. My husband and I are looking forward to volunteer as ambassadors for the IHSA championship, so looking forward to it.
Thank you. City Attorney Frieder?
No report.
City Deputy City Clerk?
No report.
Assistant City Manager?
No report.
Chief Lowry?
No report.
Director Haley?
No report.
Chief Hicks?
Yes, the fire department's getting very excited. The new ladder truck is just about here. It just recently passed its third-party testing, and we're awaiting the completion of the punch list that was put out when we purchased it in January, so should be here by the end of the month.
Director DeVita?
On behalf of the downtown retailers, I'd like to thank everyone who came out for the hometown holiday last Friday. The streets were very festive. Our thanks to John and Mark and all the Public Works guys for getting the lights on early. It was nice and bright, they had luminaries up and down the streets. And their next open house, main event, will be holidays, of which the Chamber helps coordinate. That will be the weekend before Thanksgiving, and you can find all the details on downtowndekalb.org. Second thing I want to mention is we're seeing an increase in these temporary signs, the feathers, the banner-type signage, and the city code does not allow for them without a permit. And while some find them festive, the reality is, the code does require the permit. So the Safe Built Inspectors are going to be going out and about and looking and talking to the business owners and letting them know what the code is and asking them to come in for the permit. They are allowed six times a year at two weeks at a crack. The permit is only $10, so we ask that folks come in and get the temporary permit, that they keep them out of the right-of-way and don't affect visibility as well. And on Tuesday, the 17th, the Chamber is going to host a restaurant retail group meeting. This is the first time, and I think in a while at least, that we've had that. It's open to all operating restaurants in the city, Chamber member or otherwise, and there'll be a presentation on credit card processing. They'll be talking about other items and issues that could help you do business better. So we invite restaurateurs to come do that. And similarly, we will hold another all-business training session on December 3 regarding the internet and code, and that will be held at Feranda's. And then on Tuesday, we will host the Chamber, Tuesday, December 8, we will host the Chamber Downtown meeting again. Thanks.
Thank you. City Engineer Luskowski?
No report.
Thank you. Kate, I apologize, location of your ward coffee on December 5?
It's going to be right here in council chambers.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn? Some moved. Moved by Alderman-Baker, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman-Markwart. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. The both same side? Carry it.